I will call the regular May ninth, regular council meeting to order at six o'clock. Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmacher.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
Aaron, any amendments to the agenda? Melissa, public comments?
Yes, we have Anne Levitin, yes. Excuse me, I brought copies, but I didn't know how many people were gonna be here, so you might have to share some of my comments. Okay, good evening. I'll try not to take up too much of your time on an issue that is probably not at the top of your list of concerns. My name is Anne Levitin, I'm seventy-four years young. I reside at seven oh one Snowy Plain Road in Fort Collins. I officially moved to Colorado from Minnesota in August of two thousand and eighteen, but luckily I purchased my home in September of two thousand and fourteen. Anticipating. I'm here today before you regarding the Town of Tinmouth Municipal Code, Section seven dash nine dash three hundred. Animals at large prohibited. For the record, I've recently received two summons for walking my dogs off leash in March in Wenzel Park area. The first one was in March, on March fourth, and the second one is, was on March twenty-fourth. In both cases, I was walking my three Australian shepherds. Skeeter, age six, weight almost sixty-six pounds. Trey, age three, weight seventy-three pounds, and Molly, age one, fifty-two and a half pounds. The combined weight is one hundred and ninety-one pounds. I weigh one eighty-six, they win. A photo of my dogs is attached. For the record, I am not physically able to walk or control all three dogs on leashes. I walk with a cane because my balance is also poor, and I don't want to fall, and I had two falls back in December of twenty-two, trying to hold on to them. Give you a little history here, I learned about the Harmony Reservoir back in twenty-twenty from a friend. Up until then, I had been unsuccessful in finding any place where I could let my dogs run free. Word of mouth back then was that the Town of Tinmouth was not enforcing its animal-at-large code because several of the city employees.
And Anne, your, your comments are limited to three minutes, I just want to make sure that you got through it all, you still got plenty of time.
Okay.
Yeah, no, you still got plenty of time, you got forty-five seconds, but in looking at your deal, I don't think you'd get through it.
Sure. Anyway, I was told back then it wasn't enforced because many of the city employees brought their dogs there to swim and play. So basically, during the winter months, I walk on the concrete trail that goes around the reservoir. During the rest of the year, I enjoy walking on the foot trail with my dogs where I can throw sticks in the water and they can fetch them and swim. And Aussies need a lot of exercise, I'm moving forward. I have a lot of medical conditions, basically, that make it almost near impossible for me to hold on.
Okay, Anne, you're up, your time's up, I'll give you another ten seconds to conclude.
Well, the medical things are outlined there, I won't go over them, they're quite extensive. So basically, what I'm asking the council or the staff to consider adding some sort of reasonable accommodation for dog walkers like me with disabilities as an exception to the Tinmouth Code regarding animals at large. I know I'm probably not the only one that has, has limitations like that, and I would certainly, as a past city planner, be willing to work with any staff regarding how that exception might work. I visualize a permit that would be issued.
Okay, Anne.
Following documentation. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Anybody else?
Bill Jenkins. Good evening, Bill Jenkins, five five zero seven, Sugarloaf Court. I'm directing my comments to Resolution thirty-seven, Series twenty-twenty-three. I strongly support this resolution, and I'd like to congratulate the town staff and consultants for putting together a really solid economic incentive policy targeting small businesses. It's noteworthy that the emphasis of this policy has a flexibility to support local small business growth and is targeting small businesses that serve the local community. It's also noteworthy that the resolution calls for the possibility that, quote, "preferences may be given to small business owners who also live in the Town of Tinmouth." Another important consideration that strongly aligns with the town's adopted twenty-twenty Comprehensive Plan is that this incentive plan targets Old Town specifically, as well as the Harmony Corridor. This aligns well with the expressed desires of the town's citizens. The resolution also clearly defines various criteria that will be used to evaluate applications and provides for a transparent process that allows for the protection of competitive, privileged information. The incentives themselves are clearly designed to benefit small businesses while providing appropriate protections for the town. The only thing missing from this plan is a clear definition of what constitutes a small business. Hopefully, that can be addressed as part of the implementation plan once this resolution is adopted. Thank you for your efforts on this important measure, thanks.
Thank you. Melissa?
That is all.
Okay. Consent agenda. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Reports. Counsel, anybody have a report? Go ahead, Robert.
Mayor, thank you, we had the council chat last week, and that was well-attended, including by several in the room here, so appreciate that. And those are quarterly, I'm not sure who's, who's up next for, for the next one, but I encourage folks to attend those. We, we got a lot of great questions and appreciated that. And then this weekend, we have town cleanup. It's at eight to noon, I believe. Always, always well-attended, get there early, the dumpsters do fill up.
Thank you. You guys have anything?
I'll just go ahead and reach out, thank both the police department and town staff for their involvement in the bike-to-school activity that was at Bethke Elementary. I, I rode that, I rode that myself with my son, and it was a well-attended and very exciting event, kids had a fantastic time, and.
You can ride a bike?
I can, if I put some training wheels on it, I can, I can really move. And then, then as well as with the, the Bethke anniversary that they had, I know some town staff helped out a little bit with that, so I really appreciate the, the, the towns' involvement with the community.
Thanks for attending it also, Brett. Anybody there, okay? Proclamation, Lisa.
Okay, so Maine, uh, Maine, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and every town within Larimer County is part of the Behavioral Health Policy Committee that's run through the county. And so one of the things that they do is really try to encourage different communities to acknowledge mental health awareness things and, and such as that, so I will just read through this. Whereas Mental Health Awareness Month has been observed since nineteen forty-nine to raise awareness of mental health conditions and the importance of mental health, and whereas nearly fifty-eight million American adults, more than one in five, live with a mental illness, and whereas nearly one in three youth with major depression do not receive any mental health treatment, even in states with the greatest access, and whereas Colorado ranks thirty-seventh out of fifty-one states with a higher prevalence of mental health issues and lower rates of access to care for adults and youth, and whereas in twenty-twenty-one, forty-two percent of high school students experienced persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness, with eighteen percent of students making a suicide plan and ten percent attempting suicide, and whereas cost-effective and beneficial mental health systems of care must be expanded to meet the varying levels of care needed by the people being served. And whereas reduction of stigma, broad outreach, and effective prevention efforts of mental health conditions and substance use disorders help improve lives, and whereas access to necessary medication, appropriate treatment, and responsive peer support helps prevent individuals from ending up in emergency rooms and jails, and whereas people with lived experience of mental illness and/or substance use disorders get better, live in recovery, and provide invaluable knowledge of how to improve and transform systems of care and offer support to others struggling with mental illness and substance use. Therefore, the Town of Tinmouth Town Council proclaims May twenty-twenty-three as Mental Health Awareness Month. And witness whereof, I hear, here, I have here unto set my hand and the seal of the Town of Tinmouth this ninth day of May twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Lisa. Resolution number thirty-seven, Series twenty-twenty-three, a resolution approving an economic development incentive policy, small business. Matt Blakely.
Thank you, Mayor. The town staff has been working on this for several months now, and we've actually, it's been a collaboration with the town manager and town attorney and other staff members, as well as we actually brought in an expert, Mike Scholl with Ayers Associates, who's actually, in past, he may give a little bit of this, but in his past life, he was a Economic Development Director for the City of Loveland, and he has been doing these, this kind of contract basis now through Ayers, but this is kind of his expertise, the, the area of putting together incentive plans and administering them. So he's given us a lot of good guidance here. There's a memo in the, in the staff report that goes along with that, and then we've got a PowerPoint presentation that I'll have him, it's just two slides, pretty quick kind of a thing, I'll have him present that. Do want to say, though, that this, we focused on the small business type of incentives. There are methodologies on how to apply for those incentives and what those incentives can be used for. And I'll let, I'll let Mike do the, the heavy lifting here, and then we'll, as staff, we're available to answer questions that you guys may have, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mike.
So can you introduce yourself and give us your address?
Sorry. So my name is Mike Scholl, and with Ayers Associates, we are a consulting firm based out of Fort Collins, we're at three six six five JFK. And as Matt mentioned, I'm actually a resident of Loveland and worked for the City of Loveland for over a decade. And all of the, as Matt kind of referred to, any of the incentives and incentive types that are referred to in the policy, I've kind of managed, reviewed, approved, and, and serviced over my, my tenure with the City of Loveland here in Northern Colorado. So I have some direct experience kind of working on them, so I, one of the, kind of when I was asked to kind of help, assist and provide some kind of perspective and guidance on kind of putting this together. The idea was to be able to put a very clear and transparent process together for how you accept, review, and approve and manage incentive requests for, for the town. And so with a focus on small business and small and emerging, growing businesses in the town, which I think is a good thing. You know, obviously, they're big drivers for economic development, and I think to the extent you can support small business, I think it's a really strong, it's a good thing in a community. And I think part of, part of, you know, working with the, the town staff was kind of trying to provide, kind of define, kind of what are those goals and outcomes that you're looking for with that incentive, both from kind of a, a policy revenue basis, but also from a geography where you're looking for that investment to occur. You know, I think the downtown core area, some of the, the, on Harmony Road was brought up as a priority, and I think identified through other planning efforts in the town as well. And I, and then I think the other part of it is what, how do you apply the incentive? What is it for? And how do you manage it? And so I think the, the, the direction that I received was thirty-five thousand, which is a fairly modest economic incentive that can be used for things like building permit fees, construction use tax, and facade improvements. And we also discussed making investments, I think, in buildings that provide some long-term benefit. I think, I, I bet, that was my, you don't, I think in Tinmouth, it's, you don't have as much of it, but I know in the downtown core, you have some older buildings that, to try to make sure that they're economically viable, if you can provide, help businesses make investments to make them accessible, to put in infrastructure like grease interceptors for restaurants and things like that, as well as fire suppression systems too, which I know are very big, with the fire marshal, which I've experienced. So, so kind of looking at those ideas, how you use it, how you apply, and if you want to go to the, the next slide. And so kind of once we define kind of the application process, the, 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 what it can be used for, the, the kind of types, the other thing we try to define is those types of incentives. And it's really the, the enhanced sales tax, which is a rebate, in both the construction use tax and building permit fee reimbursements. And so generally, my experience is, when you're dealing with those, is you don't want to necessarily waive them. You'd like to see businesses actually pay them, and then you rebate them, so you take the revenue, you pay it back, or you, you rebate it back to those, those, those applicants. The same with the enhanced sales tax, I mean, you want to make sure that they're current, they're paying those taxes, then you able to re, re, rebate that back to them over time. And just for some perspective, at thirty, if you're thinking about a retail business, at fifty percent of sales tax, at thirty, capped at thirty-five thousand as a total incentive, that's about two million dollars in sales from a small, so that's a pretty small business. And I think if you're talking about, you know, locally owned or become more of a mom and pop, you know, that's two million in sales may occur over the course of maybe three, three to four, depending on kind of the type and the nature of the business and the retail, so. But the idea is to provide some flexibility so that they can be kind of reviewed administratively, allow for some efficiency, and to meet kind of the timeframe and the needs of the applicant in the business as well, and also how you can apply them. So even though it's fifty percent of construction use tax and fifty percent, I think up to certain thresholds, you could apply one or multiple of those incentives in any single incentive, so if it's a, some building permit fee waiver, if they're eligible, plus some sales tax reimbursement, I think you, you have the discretion to kind of how you apply that. And, and obviously, if, you know, based on the way the policy's written, if it's anything above thirty-five thousand, if they come in, if there's some extenuating circumstances where the applicant or the, believe that they maybe they're, deserve, or, or their investment is worthy of kind of a greater consideration, then obviously that becomes a function of a, a public meeting in the town board. So, so that, that, those are kind of the details I was told. I hope to be, that you appreciate brevity, having worked for eleven years for the City of Loveland, I respect that tremendously. And so with that, I think unless there's anything else, I'll, I'll kind of answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Mike, appreciate it, it was well-written, I think that's why you don't have any, any questions, we, it was very clear.
Cool, thank you, appreciate that.
Any comments or questions by the council?
You, you know, I, I do have a question here, which is, I, I think this is, is great work, it, it looks good, but I don't know. Did we get any input or suggestion from the small number of small businesses we, we have in, in town? Or might there be a way as we implement this to, to maybe get some of that, get some of that impact, input?
We didn't reach out, but based on a lot of Mike's experience, we were using that as kind of our benchmark as to this is a, these are reasonable things. These are things that people look for, and they actually appreciate these opportunities. You know, some of the anecdotal things we've heard from, from some of the folks, it, it would have helped the, come of, some of these, to get started, having a little bit of chipping away at some of these costs that they had upfront potentially. I mean, to Mike's point, they'd have to pay, and then they get rebated, but it's, if they can show that, hey, we can, we can stretch a little bit to start, and then we'll get it back to a degree, that would have been a big help for the ones that we've already had experience with.
And Robert, I don't know if they talked to you, but at our council chat, there were three small business owners there, and all three of them thought that the incentive plan was excellent, they were, they were more than excited.
That's, that's great to, to have that input. Yeah, I, I just, you know, to the extent that we can cultivate those relationships and, and partner with them, I, I'd love to do that. So I, I don't know what, you know, further implementation steps we have to, to realize this, assuming camp, council approves it tonight, but I'd be interested in trying to partner.
Any other?
I just want to first say thanks for putting all of this together, I know it's something that we've been talking about for some time. I didn't see anything in here, and I may have maybe missed something, but, so if there were a situation where town staff did not approve a business incentive request, are there steps that can be taken for that business perhaps to come to council to request it? Or, or, and, and I don't know if that would happen, since this is all brand-new for us, but I just kind of want to think about if there is a business that's requested something and it, it got denied. Yeah, like can they appeal it, or, or can there be things done for that?
So I, I think part of the way we drafted is to provide some discretion or some flexibility at the staff level. Part of it, my experience is that, that if, with kind of knowledgeable and proactive staff, you can work with the applicant to make sure that it's something that fits, and they understand what those criteria are, so it doesn't get to that point. You know, but obviously, you can't account for everyone, and so, you know, somebody made, you know, they, it may have a different perspective. But I think, I think based on the way it's written and, and kind of with my, being able to share my experience, it provides some flexibility that it's a bit of an iterative process with the applicant, and so they can understand, it's like, you know, if you're gonna do something like this, this is something aligned with what we're supporting, and we can, we can provide that, or, you know, or if, you know, if, if you're not, you know, if it's not gonna be a sales tax revenue generating, if there's other mitigating circumstances, I think that, that information can be shared and, and, and I would say not negotiated per se, but I think, but you can work through some of those details generally.
Okay, thank you, I actually think that it's good to have some flexibility, like it's written in here, because I think we don't know exactly what we're gonna be asked. I also don't feel like we're gonna have twenty businesses coming, knocking on our door at the same time to do this, so hopefully, hopefully it'll work out, and hopefully we'll have some potential business owners take advantage of it.
So you're comfortable with the resolution? Okay.
Yes, Luke.
So applications are only effective if the resolution passes and there's no historical lookback, it's all improvements at this point going forward, is that correct?
It would be new, new applications, correct?
Thank you.
Just to actually understand the point, members of staff for this would essentially be, you know, town manager, community development director, town planner, that those, those would be the staff members that would be interacting with business owners, prospective business owners.
Yeah, that would, we'd start there and if we needed to actually lean on somebody like Mike or something, we might have to reach out and kind of get some of his perspective on it, but it would be town manager and probably myself and a few other people that we'd bounce like, okay, here are the parameters, is it meeting these criteria or not meeting these criteria? And then if we feel like there's some gray area that we need more clarification, we might reach out to Mike and say, hey, what do you think about this? And so we, we lean on the resources we have.
Okay. And I, I think it, the, the resolution largely reflects what the council had discussed in past work sessions, so thank you for that and I would just lay out my expectation that over time this will evolve, so keep, keep looking at opportunities to, to refine and tweak and make this more specific to Tinmouth as we go and let's go from there.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve resolution number thirty-seven, series two thousand and twenty-three? A resolution approving an economic development incentive policy, small business.
I move to approve a resolution approving an economic development incentive policy, small business.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The resolution carries unanimously. This is, this is something actually we've been working on as a council since you and I got on here Brett and, and Lisa. And so it's, it's nice to see it finally happen. Resolution number thirty-eight, series two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving crossing agreement for White Soul Farm Park. Notice it's White Soul. Presented by Brian Williamson.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a crossing agreement, this will enable us to complete a loop trail around the White Soul Park in the Harmony Pond that's out there. We generally have a crossing agreement anytime we cross one of the waters that are ditch companies waters. We have a great relationship, the same body that, that operates this reservoir operates Tinmouth Reservoir, so we have a great relationship with them. This is the same agreement in, in form that we used when we did the T-Rock Crossing back in two thousand and twenty-two. So it's, you know, we've kind of been through the, the wringer on, on editing it. They did reduce the, their standard fee of twenty thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars because of our long-standing relationship with them. I'm happy to, we are also bidding the construction project, those bids close tomorrow and then we'll hopefully have a contract recommendation for you at the next meeting. Happy to answer any questions about it.
No questions? No comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number thirty-eight, series two thousand and twenty-three? A resolution approving a crossing agreement for White Soul Park.
I move to approve a resolution approving a crossing agreement for White Soul Park.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution number thirty-eight, series two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving crossing agreement for White Soul Farm, uh, Rysol Park is approved unanimously. I will put a side note in, the reason why I know it's exactly White Soul is because Coach White Soul was my coach in eighth grade and he decided because of my great behavior that I deserved a shot of a paddle about that thick with holes drilled into it. And I don't forget.
Can that paddle be mounted at the reservoir?
Maybe we can bury it.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, we are adjourned.